Call roll, Debbie.
Karen Gibson.
Here.
Karen Bobbin.
Here.
Matt Headstrom.
Here.
Matt Grohl.
Here.
All right, if everyone could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to approving tonight's agenda. Counsel, any questions about tonight's agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
We need an executive session.
We do not.
So, scratching item 11. Any other... Any other changes, counsel? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
We approve the agenda, striking item 11, executive session.
Second. I have a motion by Todd, second by Karen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's for oh. Moving on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Counsel, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? Hearing done, I would entertain a motion.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen. All in favor say aye.
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 Carrie's for oh. Move on to the communications section. Kichai Civic Groups or Committees? Do we have any civic groups or committees here this evening? All right, seeing none. I'll move on to the Kichai good news. Counsel, any Kichai good news before I show my? All right, I want to give a great shout out to the Kichai Arts Council. They were able to procure a lot of donations for the Wichita Children's Health. And if you'd like to see all of their bounty that they were able to take to them, that picture is on the Kichai Arts Council Facebook page and in the newsletter. Right? Yeah, it will be in the newsletter. In our newsletter, also posted on the Kichai website and on Facebook as well. So, congratulations to them and thank you for all you do for our community. I also want to have a big shout out. This week is Public Service Appreciation Week. So, thank you to our staff. You guys do an amazing job and we greatly appreciate all that you do to make sure that the city runs every day. You guys are noticed and we do appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that ends my Kichai good news. Moving on to public comment, Debbie. Public comment.
Joni Harris.
And I am ready.
Joni Harris, 109 West Chippewa Street. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to all the Kichai City Council members for serving your constituents and business owners of the City of Kichai, especially during our annual budget season. I appreciate the publication of your budget priorities. Thank you to the Kichai Police Department and each officer for keeping Kichai safe. I appreciate the work that they do. The City Council has made public safety number one priority for the past three years. Kichai has the lowest officer-to-population ratio in the greater Wichita metro area, except for East Borough. I commended that potentially chose to tax themselves for police protection. I provided these ratios to every council member during last year's budget season. It is also my understanding that as a third-class city, Kichai has a Cedric County Sheriff available for backup when needed. The council has chosen to continue to tax residents of Kichai for an ever-growing police department. Valley Center, Park City, and the Cedric County Sheriff publish their police calls in the Ark Valley News Weekly. For a better picture of what is happening in the City of Kichai, I would request publication on a monthly basis to the Kichai Lamp or the Ark Valley News paper of what is happening in Kichai. Or, perhaps it would be more helpful for residents to see a quarterly report on the types of crimes that our police department encounters. Main requests by residents are for neighborhood patrolling throughout Kichai to curb speeding and for people running stop signs. I ask that this year that you do not fulfill the requests by the Kichai Police Department. I inquired at the community in coffee about the sewer plan. Thank you to Council President Headstrom for explaining that the main focus is to expand our sewer capacity for future growth as developers cannot absorb the cost to do so. Expansion would fall upon current residents and business owners. A water resource master plan presentation was given by PEC in 2023 with a huge investment value. No discussion has occurred since that time regarding the specific nature or plans the city has. It is also stated that even if money was saved towards that plan, the city was under no obligation to use designated funds for that type of project. The decision by this council has given every new construction business currently coming to Kichai, upon request, a 10-year sliding scale tax abatement or a sliding scale tax rebate for 10 years if located within the Arts and Business District or a specific area of Citydale. They can apply for the NRP. While it is important to talk about sewer services and even more so, I would encourage a realistic... the realistic growth that Kichai can have, but is not having its own water source and being reliant upon Wichita Water or CCUA, and that a greater discussion would occur with residents and business owners of Kichai, including the anticipated increased property tax revenue that would be available in about five years, fully in 10. Yes, I'm aware that the industrial park is nearly filled with businesses that intend to build or locate within Kichai. We have commercial projects coming to the core of Kichai. Those areas are expected to be developed at some time. Yet, is there part of the discussion the reality that many people chose to purchase a home in the City of Kichai because it's a small town? And they did not desire to live in the surrounding municipalities of Bel Air, Park City, or Valley Center due to the size of those cities? Organic growth will come, but I have yet to hear from a large number of residents that they desire growth to be pursued for Kichai. Thank you for prioritizing park playground equipment. Yay, that's awesome. And I hope that you keep in mind that Park's master plan from 2021 in consideration of future decisions made regarding our park. Could this be the year the City Council decides it's time to focus on the Public Works Department? This department is foundational to maintaining and expanding, when needed, the infrastructure of Kichai. For the past three years that I have lived here, Public Works has requested to have additional staff and they've been denied every year. Public Works is critical to keep our utility infrastructure working well, for giving insight for the Kichai park maintenance needs, equipment replacement, and new decisions that are made, for giving knowledgeable insight regarding water, sewer, natural gas, streets, public works-related partnerships that may occur with surrounding municipalities, zoning, sidewalks, and so much more. Is the Public Works Department... is the Public Works facility adequate? Do they have proper equipment needed to carry out their work well? When will the City Council decide it's time to allocate monies in the budget to increase the Public Works Department staffing and a facility for the future growth of Kichai that the council has decided that they desire? I hope it will happen for 2026. Again, thank you for engaging in the budget process and for listening to the people of Kichai.
Good evening, everyone. Cheryl Hobson. I live at 622 North Shawnee Circle. Also going to talk about the budget priorities. And so, what I've heard from, you know, my neighbors, people in the park, all of that. So, most of what I've heard is about the park. And for me and everybody that I've talked to is like, "Thank you very much for having started a park board." Everybody seems to be very excited about that. I know I am. And the big thing is the equipment that's there and replacing that, or at least fixing what we can do. And then making it safe. I think the big thing that I've heard from everybody is making everything safe. Lot of concerns about the ADA from folks. And if we can't make all of it new, at least make, you know, some of it new and this year. And making it, at least all of it safe. We can make all of it, you know, fixed this year. That seems to be a big concern. Everybody seems to be, and myself, pretty excited about the new businesses on Oliver there for the Arts and Businesses District. And with the new coffee shop and all of that, everybody seems to be pretty excited about that. And also with the Police Department. And really appreciate all of the rounds that you make with the neighborhoods. It's... Everybody has noticed that and they've really appreciated. I appreciate it. So, I just want to say thank you. And that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will close the public comment. Moving on to the conditional use. I've got my paper. Okay. This is for seven charges. All right, I call agenda item 7A, a consideration of case number CU-2025-01, request to allow an oversized storage shed or structure on a property in the A1 agricultural district zoning. Before we proceed, would any member of City Council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason? Let the record show that there is no extensions and that a quorum of four council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of 20% or more of the property being rezoned or 20% or more of the property within the official notification area. Has the city clerk determined a valid protest in this case? The planning commission held a public hearing for this case on April 8th, 2025. Has the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved meeting minutes?
Yes.
Does the council and everyone present on the case believe the public hearing was fair and impartial?
Yes.
Yes.
I will now call on zoning administrator Dustin Felton to present the case report, background information, and the planning commission's recommendation. Dustin.
Thank you. Are you guys able to see your screens?
No.
No.
Okay.
Hold on. I'm going to try and think about my screen.
Okay. Case number CU-2025-01, BJ Miller. Conditional use to allow an oversized storage shed or structure. Thank you. You're in 18 now. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to construct the storage shed or structure that exceeds maximum gross floor area of 1,500 square feet for properties over three acres, but not more than five acres. The applicant wants to store his RV, other vehicles, and other items. The property is generally located 2,461.88 feet west of Hillside Avenue on the north side of 101st Street North or 2410 East 101st Street North in a zoned A1 agricultural district. The property is not flatted and is developed with a single-family residence. Storage shed or structure is defined in the Kichai zoning regulations as a permanent or temporary structure used for general storage of personal items, including vehicle storage when required access servicing is provided to the right of way. The applicant is claiming on the storage shed or structure to be about 42 by 60 feet or 2,520 square feet, which is 1,020 square feet over the maximum permitted by Section 10.45 of the zoning regulations. Kichai zoning regulations state, except as approved by conditional use, maximum gross floor area shall be as follows. Lots over three acres, but not more than five, 1,500 square feet total between no more than three structures. Approval of this request would allow the applicants to construct the storage shed or structure as proposed. The subject property was developed in 1950. There have been no other zoning actions on this property. To the north, south, and east, we have A1 with, to the north, being used for agricultural and single-family residential. South and east, single-family residential. West is E for the county or A1 recreational park in the county for the one-on-one club. And there is a single-family residential house to the west of it as well. Oliver Street is a paved local road and all public services are available and provided to the property. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan. Context-sensitive developments help preserve and enhance both the function and aesthetics of adjacent features. See recommendation number two below. Based upon information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved subject to the following conditions. The applicant or contractor shall submit a building permit and provide engineered design plans. Two, the storage shed or structure must comply with specific use standards of Section 10.45. Development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. No hazardous waste or materials shall be stored in excess of regular household use in the storage shed or structure. Five, if the zoning administrator finds that there's a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. This recommendation is based upon the following. One, the properties to the north, east, and south are zoned as A1 agricultural district and developed with single-family homes. Property to the west is in Cedric County and developed as a community center. There is also a single-family home in the area to the west. Two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan. Three, 101st Street North is a paved two-lane arterial road with open ditches. Staff do not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed garage. Four, the subject site is currently zoned A1, which permits a storage shed or structure that exceeds the maximum gross floor area by conditional use approval. The property is approximately 1,094,086 square feet and has a maximum lot coverage of 30%. The primary residence and proposed oversized storage shed or structure will have an approximate combined lot coverage of 2.15%. Five, the property is not vacant. It was developed as a single-family residence in 1950. Six, staff does not see an issue with A1 developed with a single-family home with an oversized storage shed or structure being adjacent to other A1 districts that have single-family homes and a community center. Seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Eight, approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. Nine, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Here we have an aerial map showing the length from 101st Street North of the property itself. The zoning map, the white here is in the county. Green is all A1. Kichai 2040 comprehensive plan map. And a quick site plan. The applicant hasn't been able to give me a official site plan, but this is off of the mobile land records maps. It shows a building here that was torn down a while ago, showing where that location was. This is the satellite image from 2024, showing that that building is no longer there and that is where the proposed new building is supposed to go. Site photos, subject property facing north, east of the subject property, south of the subject property, and west of the subject property.
Does counsel have any questions for the zoning administrator? Thank you, Justin. Does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration? Does the council have any questions for the applicant? Final input, does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that was not made available during the official public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Let us go through all of the sections again, counsel. So, for item one, I'm looking for a yes, you agree, no, I don't agree, and why? And we'll get through them as quickly as we can. The zoning use and character of the neighborhood.
Agree.
Agree.
Consistency with the comprehensive plan vision and character of the City of Kichai.
Agree.
Adequacy of public utilities, roadway, and other public service relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use.
Agree.
Agree.
The suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted.
Agree.
Agree.
Length of time property has remained vacant and zoned.
Agree.
Agree.
Comparability of the proposed district's classification with nearby properties.
Agree.
Agree.
Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property.
Agree.
Agree.
Proportionality of loss/impact to the individual property owner in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain for the community at large.
Agree.
Agree.
Public input.
Agree.
Agree.
Assuming all necessary information has been received, counsel has three options. Adopt the planning commission's recommendation of approval. Override the planning commission's recommendation of approval with a two-thirds majority vote of the governing body membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the planning commission for further consideration, along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does counsel have any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve CU-2025-01 with the recommended conditions.
Agree, or second?
A motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation has been made by Councilmember Headstrom and seconded by Councilmember Brewer. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's for oh. Case number CU-2025-01 is approved. The approval will become effective on the date ordinance number 1849-25. This will be published in the Ark Valley News. And we'll move on to the next one. I now call agenda item 7B, a consideration of case number Z-2025-02, a request to allow rezoning of property in... property to the R2 multifamily residential district on that property in A1 agricultural district zoning district. Before we proceed, would any member of the City Council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason?
No.
No.
Let the record show that there are no extensions. The quorum of four council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of 20% or more of the property being rezoned or 20% or more of the property within the official notification area. Has the city clerk determined a valid protest in this case? The planning commission held a public hearing for this case on April 8th, 2025. Has the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Does the council and everyone present on the case believe the public hearing was fair and impartial?
Yes.
Yes.
I will now call on zoning administrator Dustin Felton to present the case report, background information, and the planning commission's recommendation. Dustin, welcome back.
Thank you. All right, Z-2025-02, George Elder, requesting a zone change to R2 multifamily residential district. The current zoning is A1 agricultural. Generally located 400 feet east of Hillside Avenue on the south side of 101st Street North or 3501 East 101st Street North. The property owner notification letters and the public notification posted in the Ark Valley News stated that the zone change requested was A1 to C2 local commercial district when it should have been R2 multifamily residential district. The letters and notification in the Ark Valley News also stated all five properties owned by the applicant were being changed. The applicant later stated he wanted the northern three properties rezoned. Letters were resent on or around March 19th, 2025, with a correct zoning request and limited to the northern three parcels. Article 4.3 of the Kichai zoning regulations designate what zoning classifications are lower to higher intensity. Under KSA 12-757B, the planning commission can make a recommendation for a lesser zoning classification change without redoing the publication process. Here we see Section 4.3, establishment of districts. A1 as the least intense, all the way up to industrial as being the highest intensity. C2 here as basically a seven intensity when R2 multifamily residential district is lower, which is placed at number five on the list. The City of Kichai zoning regulations also deny the use of a PEO, a planned development overlay district, with A1 agricultural district. The applicant property owner is requesting a zone change from A1 to R2 multifamily district to develop/allow for Airbnb's, bed and breakfast dens, and townhomes. The property is generally located at 3501 East 101st Street North. The subject property is 16.9 acres and developed for agricultural and commercial use. A1 district does not allow townhomes and only permits Airbnb's by conditional use. R2 multifamily district permits both by right. The property owner has plans to add the Airbnb's and townhomes in phases. There are no plans for having apartments, boarding houses, group homes, or tri/quadplexes. See conditions below. The property owner has plans to convert part of the creamery into four Airbnb's. Case history: The property was annexed by the City of Kichai on March 24th, 2016, under ordinance 1684-16. On April 12th, 2016, two cases were heard and approved, 7-0, by the planning commission. Z-2016-01, zoning to A1 after annexation. And SU-2016-01, special use to allow sawmill, furniture shop, agritourism consisting of banquet hall, seasonal restaurant with kitchen, berry picking, and sales with gravel parking. Property owners wanted to expand their business, but county regulations did not allow a sawmill. The City of Kichai was able to annex the property and through zoning, conditional use, and special use cases, the owners were able to expand their agritourism vision. To the north and south is farming ranch operations all within the county with no improvements, or excuse me, with improvements. East is agricultural farming ranch operations, no improvements in the county. And west is farming ranch operations with improvements in the county. 101st Street North is a two-lane paved arterial road with open ditches. The future development plan map of the plan depicts the subject property as appropriate for housing, as stated in case SU-2016-01. Little is said in the comprehensive plan in regards to commercial use in the A1 district. The vision of the Kichai comprehensive plan does state, Kichai has a small-town feel with excellent access to metropolitan amenities. Residents enjoy a... excuse me, residents enjoy safe and friendly neighborhoods where they truly feel like they are part of the community. Kichai's economic activity will be fueled by diverse mix of goods and services in a vibrant arts and business district. Ample opportunities for recreational, cultural, and leisure activities will enhance Kichai's quality of life. Vision and goals of the Kichai comprehensive plan: Build a strong and diverse local economy that attracts local retail service and office businesses and promotes arts, crafts, and other small enterprise businesses. Create a sense of place through land use planning, development patterns, site design, and community aesthetics. Optimize the efficiency of providing city services through land use patterns. Provide a development pattern that supports economic development while maintaining safe neighborhoods. Provide quality and context-sensitive aesthetics in development and redevelopment. Based upon the information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved subject to the following conditions. One, special use case 2016-01 shall remain in effect. Two, the property shall not be allowed to have apartments, boarding homes, group homes, and/or tri or quadplexes. This recommendation is based on the following findings. Properties to the north, south, and west are in the county and zoned F farming ranch operation with improvements. Property to the east is in the county and zoned F farming ranch operation, no improvements. Two, the request of the rezoning is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Three, staff do not anticipate a significant increase in public utilities or services. Four, the subject site is currently zoned A1, which does not permit townhomes. Five, the property was developed in 1977 and has not been vacant. Six, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Condition two above should help in keeping the spirit and feel of the area. Seven, the request of a zone change is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan. Eight, staff do not expect negative impacts on community facilities. Nine, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Here we have an aerial map showing Eldersly Farms up here. These are the three properties. It's a little bit hard to see. We've got a parcel here, a backwards L-shaped here. We've got a parcel here, a backwards L shaped here, and then this guy that comes around. Zoning showing these top three right here are the properties to be rezoned. They are within the city, zoned A one, and we've got county, 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 and then further down here is county. This is all owned by the same owner as well. Future development plan map. Site photos, subject property facing south, looking west, north of subject property and east. As some more information, we've got a site plan done in phases. Stage one residences, excuse me, stage one Airbnb's and units and the creamery is right here. I also have floor plans if you wish to see those as well.
Sure.
Okay.
Sorry, yes, please.
Oh, no, not a problem. I understood. Got bedroom, kitchen. And the last one, this is the top floor, I believe. Yes.
You just get top floor, which like, what do you mean?
Creamery has two floors, two levels in it, some, some on the bottom, and then there's going to be Airbnb on top.
Okay, thank you. Then it should have been like, thank, does the council have any questions for the zoning administrator? I have a script, I just. Go back to the main floor, Lynn, please.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is basically two living areas.
Yes.
Two, and then, and then up, one up above, right?
Yes.
So it'll be three living areas in this one building.
Yes.
And then this is just the Airbnb?
Yeah, yeah, the, the townhomes aren't expected to be for a while, I believe. The applicant is here, he can speak on that better than I can.
Next. Any other, any other questions? Go ahead. So the townhomes, it says it's not apartments, boarding houses, group homes or tri or quadplexes. What will the purpose of the townhomes be? Will it be for a resident to own it or is it a rental? Is it an Airbnb? What is the purpose of the townhome?
I believe that townhomes will be for either long-term Airbnb type style.
Okay.
Or even residential.
Residential as in owned by a resident?
Yes, I believe so. Is, is that correct, George? Okay.
So it won't be rented, won't be rental property.
No, no, there's no plans to have rentals up there as far as I know.
Any other questions for Dustin? Okay.
Andrew, you reviewed the chain room, what was published and everything's good up there?
Oh, yes, uh, yeah. Yes, that's all, that's all okay. We looked at it at the time.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration?
I do, just to clarify if I may.
Go ahead, please.
So it's, it's a little bit of a funny project, so I'll do my best to be brief. But this is just an outline of the mission of the LLC that we're going to use for this work, as well as an outline of Westport Village, which is what we're going to call this area as we add residences to it. Westport Village at Eldersly. And this was always a long-term goal for us. I returned from college and started into the work that we've done at Eldersly in two thousand eight. And my ambition at that time and consistent to now was to begin with small business and work at authentic substantive businesses. And we've tried a lot of things, the creamery was one of them. But what's settled out to work in the community is our Blackberry Farm where we anticipate more than ten thousand people to come pick this year. And our restaurant, which is filled out a niche that's small, that fits a lot of the description of, I think, Kichai's eccentric, but purposeful and thoughtful desire. So converting the creamery into this series of residences, Airbnb's, to answer a little bit more carefully. There's nothing I know more in small business than that any initial battle plan will face modification as soon as you encounter the enemy. The reason that I wanted to, after discussion with Matt and discussion with Dustin and my wife, the reason I wanted to pursue a zoning change at the beginning was that I don't know exactly how this will go. In our area, there's been strong demand for people that are young or people that are in a transition phase to have a rental. I have had multiple siblings, cousins, friends who have asked or rented the places that were available and they had strong occupancy. For us with the restaurant, the highest value per month per square foot would be an Airbnb. So we would like to see that work. That said, I very purposely did the architecture and the reason we are zoning it or requesting this zoning is so that we have the flexibility to use what's going to be a significant investment as a tool to either serve as an Airbnb nightly or also as a rental that we provide for. One of these units is provided for agent space for my parents. They need a place that is out there. There's nothing in the housing stock for somebody that doesn't want a single family maintenance burden of three acres, five acres. They don't want to leave the place they've lived. They want to stay there, but nothing in the housing stock there really fits. And so we did want to diversify the housing stock and provide a few options. So this is an eccentric mix of what you'll see there in the bolded, bold points down at the bottom of housing purpose. And when we come to building townhouses, I would rather call them village row. If you've ever been to an English village or a German village, they are by our zoning language townhomes, but they don't resemble what we think of as townhomes. In a village row, you have people living close together with the countryside right outside the back or right at the end of the road. And I very much, I was born in the house there. I've lived on that property all my life. I very much want to maintain the countryside, but raising them children, I also like neighbors. I like people. I, I enjoy community and so does my wife, that's why we're in hospitality. And so we really believe that having a little bit more diverse housing stock where there is an option for people who want to be in the country, but also don't want the heavy burden of a single family residence, for whatever that reason is, would be an asset for the community and would allow us to transition what is an empty building right now. Built well, if you've been odd, we were very intentional to use brick and incorporate the vernacular architecture, the kick-tip barns so that it fits in with the buildings that Sunnydale had. But to use it and make that hopefully a springboard for further work on the property. Do you have any questions, councilwoman?
I, I have, well, I don't have a question, but I have to read my script. Does the council have any questions for the applicant? Karen, did that answer your question?
Hi.
Okay. Any other questions, council?
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for being here, thank you for the information.
Yep.
All right. I don't input. Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that was not made available during the official public hearing?
Oh, just a quick question. I just have a question for the applicant, like this information was not presented to the planning commission, the paper that you guys all got. I'm just wondering why the planning commission didn't have the same exact information that you guys are looking at. That's all.
Thank you.
So after attending the planning commission, one, this wasn't written at that time, but after attending it, I felt that for both my own sake and communication with anyone curious about the project, putting both our mission and core values as well as the core values of what the neighborhood is centered around and how decisions would be made as we talked to architects, builder and workman, was something that I felt I needed to do. After trying to kind of verbally wing it in the planning commission and explain everything to them verbally, this was just my personal desire to put this all in writing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I propose a closing. Assuming all necessary information has been received, which it hasn't because I haven't gone through the recommendations, my bad, council. The zoning use of the neighborhood, again, agree, disagree or comments? I'll remember the first one. The zoning use in character.
Agreed.
Agreed.
The conformance of the requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan and policy.
Agreed.
Agreed.
The accuracy of public utilities, railways and other public services relative to the anticipated impacts of proposed use.
Agreed.
Agreed.
The suitability of the subject, subject property for the use, uses it to which it has been restricted.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Length of time property has remained vacant as zoned.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Extent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property.
Agreed.
Conformance of the requested change to the, to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan and policies.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Impact of the proposed development on community facilities.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Public input.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Now, assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the planning commission's recommendation of approval. Override the planning commission's recommendation of approval with a two-third majority vote of the governing body membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the planning commission for further consideration along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does the council have any further questions for discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve Z dash twenty twenty-five dash zero two as written with the recommended conditions.
Hold on a second. I have a motion. A motion was made to approve the planning commission's recommendation as was made by council member Headstrom and signed by council member Faldrich. Starting final discussion. Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for oh. Case number Z twenty twenty-five dash zero two is approved and the approval will become effective on the date ordinance number one eight five zero dash two five is published in the Art Valley News. Moving on to section eight, old business, budget priority results slash discussion.
Thank you, committee council. I want to briefly go over the results from our exercise at the last council meeting to set some priorities for our budget process. Can everybody see that there?
Yes.
We're trying.
Here, Dustin.
I may just leave it right there.
Okay.
Okay. I wanted to make it a little bit bigger, but I don't think it's going to.
It will, it's the bottom. I can kind of be one of these.
There we go. Thank you. So the exercise we did at our last council meeting, we went through the little sticky process of prioritizing our core services, our community investment, our economic development and our incentives and partnerships. At the meeting, we discussed each one of those and the council ranked those according to what your priorities were through conversations that you had with your constituents, things you've heard in the community and you as council persons. So we took all those, we tallied them up and we came up with this chart here, which divides them into what we consider high priorities by your rankings, your tally marks on those and priorities. So under core services, high priorities were the sewer plan, police and community safety, parks and equipment. And the lesser priority, but still a priority, was street maintenance and sidewalk expansion. Under the community investment, we had gateway signs, support civic groups, things to do at the city park. And a priority under community investment was senior services. Economic development, they all ranked about equally, so we put them as high priority. Marketing Kichai, retail development, an active chamber, update the permitting process to allow businesses to come in for easier, make it easier for them to do business in the city and sewer enhancements. And then incentives and partnerships, high priority was to strengthen chamber partnerships, to explore funding opportunities such as grants, more community involvement, specifically with people coming to council meetings and the input from the community. And the priority was to market Kichai. Do all of those look consistent with what some of your discussions were?
I'm in some.
Okay. So we took these and we put them out on Facebook and got a little bit, a little bit of feedback on Facebook. Now, we have to remember, we don't know if these people that gave feedback are citizens or not citizens. Okay? So some of the feedback was street maintenance over police. Sidewalk maintenance before sidewalk expansion. And that comment had to do kind of with the area that's under construction now and those really broken up sidewalks by the playhouse, which are coming out if they're not out already and those are going to be replaced. Paving roads and street lights in the area of town that don't have them, specifically the rural areas. I'm assuming that comment maybe came from the Sunnydale area up in there. Another one was, uh, street maintenance in Prairie Creek. Get rid of the chips that are on the roads up there. And get rid of the gravel was kind of the other comment. Update the city park, support the fair and sidewalks on sixty-first Street to the city limits. Police and community safety, number one on core services. Street maintenance, police not a priority, don't need extra officers. A decrease in property tax. Focus on senior housing is badly needed here. Build for the future generations with parks, make the walkability of the city better and community development and repairs to Huffman Drive. So that is what came from Facebook. Now, I had two citizens come up to city hall. They were up here to pay their utility bills and I just happened to be out there and we got to talking about it. The comments that I got from the two people that walked in were public safety and get rid of the rocks up in the Prairie Creek addition.
Yes.
So we will kind of adjust those and, and put those on the priority list as well. So I kind of give the resounding theme of maintenance in Prairie Creek and give. I kind of hear the resounding theme of maintenance in Prairie Creek and getting the chips off the street, so. I just wanted to bring those up to you, let you know the feedback that we heard, and see if you have any other questions for us, anything else you think we should prioritize.
I mean, I just think the overall plan is just planning for the future, like just, I mean, I feel like that's the theme on everything, it's not even just these priorities, it's planning on future for next five, ten, twenty years, how we're moving forward in the city.
And like I explained, these are not things we are necessarily going to do in twenty-six, but it gives us, helps us build that roadmap for planning for the future.
I guess, Matt, one, one thing, just kind of a, uh going through the process, do we think we're going to be far enough along with the park board that we'll be able to know what we need to budget for next year?
I sure hope so, yeah.
Saving.
Yeah, they're moving in that direction. At the last park board meeting, they set up a subcommittee to specifically identify a vendor that they want to do business with for the park equipment. And that is kind of the focus right now, I know it's a priority of the council, I know it's a priority of the park board, so that is kind of their focus right now. So we should know in short order.
And I know you, you told me we're getting some bids for some of the street maintenance stuff that we're planning for next year.
We are, yeah.
Is, is the Millen overlay for Prairie Creek included in that, or?
Not in, we only have estimates for what's included in this year's budget.
Right.
Moving into the twenty-six budget, we will get estimates for those, yeah.
Yep. Any other questions, councilor, comments?
I know Huffman Drive has been a challenge.
Yeah, so.
That's the, the road that r- really was not made to be a road.
Right, it's in.
Especially for the type of vehicles being brought on.
It's in horrible shape, yeah. We have reached out to contractors, we got three bids or estimates back. We've sent those over to P E C, they are developing kind of costs of what it would look like if we assess specials to those properties in that area, and then we're going to get all the property owners together and sit down with them, talk to them about what it would cost, there's varying opinions of what we should do. Everybody knows the road needs to be fixed, but who pays for it, um is whatever, you know, some of the indifference. Some of the property owners are saying, we don't want to pay a penny for it, the other ones are saying, tell us what it costs and we'll just write you a check because we want to fix some of that. So we just need to get them together, come to a consensus, and bring that back to the council and how we feel we should proceed on that, but yes, it is, we have to do something with that, and it's been a process, so.
Is there any unused um area that could be developed for uh industrial, or is that, I'm not sure, is that a leak there?
You mean for like new or on Huffman Drive?
On Huffman Drive, on?
Uh there are lots available up there, yes, yeah.
What about, what about housing?
Not on Huffman, no, Huffman's all commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council or comments? What could?
Okay.
Alright, uh water rate recommendation, this one is you again.
That's me again. Okay, so we had intended to come to council tonight with some recommendations on water rates. I'm still going to provide those to you, however, a little turn of events after discussions with individual council members, and I'll explain that after we kind of go through the rates here. Why do we need a rate adjustment? We've talked a little bit about this in the past, there has not been a rate adjustment since two thousand sixteen. Now, with that said, there have been adjustments based on the increase in the wholesale rate changes from Wichita, but the resolution itself, the last time there was a change was twenty sixteen, okay? The rate analysis presented in twenty-one recommended both a water and sewer rate adjustment, and at that time, only the sewer rates were adjusted, okay? I wasn't here, it was my understanding that there were a lot of people here at the meeting, uh they didn't want to see both rates increased at the same time, so the recommended, recommendation for the water rate increase was put on hold, and nothing was done since that time. So because those rates have not been adjusted, our water fund for utilities has become or is close to being insolvent. That is because of wholesale increases, not only on water, but piping, everything else, inflation costs, and the cost to serve, to just name a few. So by adjusting rates, we will write the water fund, okay? We're just about upside down, we need to keep it upright, if we will be able to write that utility fund to build the necessary operating reserves for the next five years and get them to where they need to be to uh operate that utility, that accounts for emergencies, um if we have big major repairs that need done, if we have main line breaks or anything like that, we have to have those reserve funds there so we can fix those. And like we've talked before, if there are no adjustments made, property taxes will be required to support the water utility, and we don't want that, we want that each utility, whether it's water, sewer, or gas, to support itself, okay? Our current water rates, the base rate for residential is currently twenty-two dollars. The base rate for a commercial meter, which is a two-inch meter, is eighty-seven thirty. The usage charge per thousand gallons is on the tiered system from, it's actually, it's not a thousand, it's zero to ten thousand, um is seven dollars and thirty-three cents, and this is the range that most people fall in, okay, this is the average range. That average usage is between three and four thousand gallons per month, when most people. Tier two is ten thousand one to fifteen, we currently charge eight dollars and seventy-three cents per thousand, and fifteen thousand gallons plus, we charge ten dollars and sixty-eight cents per thousand. After our rate study, the information that was provided, the presentation from Carl Brown, which I thought was very helpful, very insightful, provided all the information that we needed, there were some great questions asked. We used that information and made some adjustments for the increases in the wholesale rate that came after that analysis was done, so we had to adjust it a little bit, okay? So with those, we came up with the adjustments for the base rate, the residential meter, from twenty-two to twenty-eight sixty, which is about a six dollar and sixty cent in- increase. Base rate for commercial, right now, we only have two-inch meters for commercial. The rate actually went down, according to his analysis, uh went down forty-two dollars and ninety-five cents for a commercial meter, we only have a few of those out in the industrial part, so it, it's not a huge part of our system. And we also left a base rate for a three-inch water meter, which we don't have any of right now. As we continue to get businesses, if we get larger industries, they may require a three-inch, so we left it on here. And it came down about fifty-six dollars and twelve cents. So usage per thousand gallons went from seven thirty-three to nine thirty, which is about a dollar ninety-seven difference. Ten thousand to fifteen thousand gallons up to thirteen, which is a four dollar and twenty cents, twenty-seven cent difference. And over fifteen thousand gallons would go up to nineteen fifty, which is an eight dollar and eighty-two cents increase. So as I was talking to council members, we were talking here to staff, uh Todd and I had a really good conversation last night about these water rates, and he said, I would really like to see that tier one rate of zero to ten thousand gallons, see if we can reduce that a little bit to take some of the burden off people, even though it's a dollar ninety-seven, we still, he's, still wants to get that down as low as we can, and the thought process was we decrease that a little bit and increase the other tiers to encourage people to conserve water and give them more control or authority over what they're spending for their utilities, so if they, if a person would choose to conserve water, they would still fall in that first tier, but if they had unlimited financial resources and choose to uh water a lot or use a lot of water, then of course they would pay a premium for that as well. So I took that information, it was later in the day that Todd and I had that conversation, I thought about it last night, thought about it this morning, and I called Todd this morning and I said, what if we added another tier? Instead of a three-tiered system, what if we go to a four-tiered system? So we talked about that a little bit and talked about making the first tier zero to five thousand gallons and being able to reduce that charge a little bit, rather than be at nine dollars and thirty cents, we would maybe reduce it all to, and I'm just throwing out figures, you know, don't hold me to them, to, you know, eight dollars or eight dollars and thirty cents to um make that a little more affordable. So we talked about that, really Chris and I, uh worked on it all morning, worked on figures, figuring out how we could do it, and in the process, we found that with these proposed rates, our commercial customers could potentially take a dramatic increase in their water bills, okay? Um to the tune of maybe fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a month, depending on their usage. And that is not palatable, uh we, we knew if we did that, that we would probably have people moving out of town. Uh it's just not reasonable to expect somebody to, to pay that per month. You know, if you take two thousand a month, you're increasing your, your water bill over twenty thousand dollars pretty quickly, so. We felt maybe we should step back, we worked some other numbers, got back in touch with Carl Brown, explained to him uh what we found, some of our thoughts, some of the desires of the council, and he agreed to rework some of those numbers to add an additional tier and add a commercial industrial tier separate from the residential, so. This is just some of my work product, okay, it's not pretty, it's not, it may not be easy to understand, but uh we were working it on this in the eleventh hour today, and I wanted to get something to you guys, so. If you look down towards the bottom of the page there, specifically these rates right here, these are the ideas that we came up with to create a four-tiered system rather than a three-tiered system, so that would add zero to five thousand gallons, and we would come up with a new rate for that that would. Our vision is to be less than the proposed nine dollars and thirty cents uh that we have in the current tier one. Just to help those people that want to conserve. A lot of people who fall into those lower usage rates are single-family homes, um retired people, um of just two people, they have a lot less consumption, so those are the people that are on limited incomes, and I think it would maybe benefit them more if we looked at adding up worse here, that was zero to five thousand. The other part of that is creating a commercial industrial or what we kind of have talked about, high-capacity tiers, okay? The difference in those from the residential would be your high-capacity or industrial, commercial, whatever we decide to call them, would be a higher usage range, okay? They may still, they may still stay at the same per thousand rate, but instead of being five to ten thousand gallons, they may be zero to a hundred thousand gallons, for example, okay? So it would give them more usage before they fall into a different tier. So I don't have the figures for those, because like I said, it was, we were in the eleventh hour trying to get this stuff figured out tonight, based off Todd and I's conversation, and we will get with Carl Brown next week and come up with those. It may be something we can do, it may not be something we can do, but we need to let the expert run those numbers and tell us where we are with those, so. One thing we do know is we have to make some type of increase, so there will be an increase, we just want to make it as painless as possible, okay? Any questions for me?
I like the idea of an additional tier with a zero to five thousand gallon. I think that protects, like you said, our seniors that are on fixed income. So I, I like the idea of considering a tier.
I appreciate you not bringing the other one to us for recommendation, going back, so. Being able to talk through all of the processes definitely makes me feel like we're doing.
Yes, go. Can I add, unlike our tiers, we would have to do an ordinance change for a leak, for people who have leaks, because if they contact me, I try to charge them the first lea-, you know, the first tier. So we'd have to kind of look at that, and then the perspective of our commercial, we have some that not, I'd say, six months out of the year, they're using two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water. So that would be a very large bill that those.
Per month, yeah, yeah.
And I think you and I talked before the meeting, um what is the average use, like what was the average use again?
Average residential use?
It's between three and four.
Between three and four.
Yeah, between four and four.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted, yeah, sure. Any other questions, council or comments?
I kind of have maybe a, an off-the-wall question regarding commercial. Do, do our commercial users have to submit any type of water use, the plan is, like what are they using the water for, um?
Not at this time, Wichita has a current, a system like that, um it's some type of reduction, I don't know, Chris, I just brief, I just briefly looked at, Wichita has a system like that.
We don't have one right now. Not that I'm aware of, unless it was when they initially built the building.
Right.
I don't know, but not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, and with those big manufacturers, a lot of that water is used for cooling in the processes that they, you know, the steel manufacturing and equipment manufacturing, a lot of that water's used for cooling, you know, so.
I mean, I guess to Matt's point, since, uh, since we are in a bar, uh we have water issues here in Kansas, we all know that.
Yeah.
Is there a way maybe we could explore that and see what Wichita does, just because I don't want to have key chai be part of the problem. I wa- I want to, I want to make sure that like what they're using the water for is for their business and it's not a wasteful water use, I understand.
Oh sure, yeah, yeah, we can look at Wichita's.
I, I'm just thinking of a way to make sure we, I don't want to over-regulate, but I also, we're in a water crisis and everybody needs to be aware of that and be a part of the solution, and so I would rather try.
Yeah, now's, now's the time to do all of that, because our next steps would be uh when we bring something that is reasonable and palatable to the council to um to accept and make some rate changes, then Andrew would drop the resolutions and our new fee schedules and everything that, that go with that, so. Any changes to our resolution or ordinances, this is the time to do it. We'll look at Wichita's, we'll see if any of the other surrounding cities have anything, and there's a big push for water reuse right now. I joined the water reuse group or coalition, whatever they're calling themselves, and Chris is on there too, I think we have a meeting next week, the next week or in the next couple of weeks with them.
Couple of weeks, yeah.
Yeah, uh first of June, yeah, first week of June, we have a meeting on that to start talking about what we as a region can do for some of that water reuse, and that water reuse is very applicable in the commercial and industrial developments, uh because if they're just using it for cooling, they don't need potable water to run over a piece of steel, you know, so.
And I know we, um, the regional economic area partnership is um working on potentially hosting a water summit um for mayors, council members, um all that, so I'll make sure to share that, uh we're starting our subcommittee to talk about time, dates, um all the things to be able to get that, so I'll make sure everybody has that and it's posted, we have more information.
Yeah, I know, I know this is time-sensitive, we need to make changes as soon as we can, I just don't think it's reasonable to do it now. We really need to look at some of these things that came up today, uh some of the conversations that I've had with Todd and, you know, others, and see if we can come up with a, a better solution, we're not trying to gouge anybody by any. We're not trying to gouge anybody by any means, but we have to cover the costs of what it costs to operate that system.
I know, I know we need the numbers, it's just my thought process is to get the water you have to have as economically as, as possible.
Yes.
And the water you want to have, you can maybe pay a little more there.
Correct, correct. And we know that our water rates are a little higher than other cities, they're higher than Wichita and that is why it's so imperative that in addition to this, we continue to look for another water source, something that may be more equitable, more sustainable. So, we need to keep that in mind too, yeah. And I guess our goal in the future would be to bring those water rates down if we can find a more equitable, reliable source than what we have right now.
Any other questions, huh?
No.
Okay. Moving on, um, IRB resolution of intent, five one three properties.
Mayor, council in front of you is a resolution of intent to issue internal revenue bonds for five one three properties. It's a, a industrial company that, uh, we've been working with for some time. They have decided to come to Kechai to expand their facility, they're currently in Wichita. They have, are in the process of purchasing a lot of the industrial park and as part of that expansion, they have asked for IRBs and this is the beginning of the IRB process. Andrew, you wanna add anything to it?
Uh, this is very similar to the ones you've recently done for some other, uh, industrial manufacturing companies that have come to town. Um, as, as in the past, this is just a preliminary, uh, indication of the council's intent to issue IRBs in the future. It does trigger the company's ability to go get a sales tax exemption certificate so they can start ordering materials and getting their construction going. Uh, the, they have requested property tax abatement, um, on the same schedule as, as the others that we've recently done. We have done the cost-benefit analysis with Wichita State, but the determination of if and how much property tax abatement you're willing to grant on this project will come up at a, at a future meeting.
Council, any questions?
I do wanna add one thing.
Go ahead.
Um, it just comes through discussion on some past IRBs that this, the IRBs do not provide a property tax rebate, okay? It is a property tax abatement. So for the first three years, they don't pay any property tax to the city, I believe they still have to pay to the school district.
There's some, well, there, there, there are eight mills of the school districts that are not abated, the, the, you know, substantially all of the taxes are abated, but there is a little bit that's not, right?
So, for those first three years, we as the city do not receive any property taxes from them. However, after year three, we do receive a proportionate amount that increases through years ten. So, we're not giving up anything that we don't currently have, we are not giving them back any money, we are just abating those over those ten years.
Yeah, any questions? I would entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution of intent to issue internal revenue bonds for the purpose of purchasing and acquiring construction and equipment of three buildings, commercial facility in Kechai for five thirteen properties LLC, in an amount not to exceed one point eight million.
Second.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Todd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's for it. Um, moving on to council reports, does any other council member have a report this evening? All right, I do. So, uh, city meetings that I've attended this month, uh, since the last council meeting, I attended on four twenty-sixth, coffee with a cup. We discussed, uh, police activity, pub safety and, uh, many other topics, it was a really great time and Sergeant Allen did a great job at helping facilitate that, um, myself and, uh, council member Head Strong were there, um, so thank you very much for what you did, I appreciate it. Following Ken on five three twenty-five, I attended the coffee and community, so did, uh, council member, uh, Karen and Todd, we attended and, and that was held at the park. Uh, we did have Moxie Junction come and provide coffee and that was a great treat for us. Um, and we discussed things like the park vandalism at the park, uh, intersection projects and city priorities and future planning. Um, other items that I worked on this month, uh, I helped co-create the latest edition of Turtle Talk, I attended, uh, different community meetings, sign checks, invoices, discussion of Facebook posts, intersection projects, uh, discussion of council meeting agendas, discussion of public safety, group, uh, involvement, multiple conversations with the city administrator, city staff, uh, work specific groups on different projects. Uh, so some of my announcements are the Kechai city-wide garage sale, again, I wanna remind everyone that's, uh, June fourteenth and forms are up here at City Hall to fill out and drop off, you, or you can mail it to us at a vo box, which is also on the form, uh, to the fair committee. This helps being able to pay for felony news, uh, articles that we post, um, and the other events that we do throughout the year. Um, we will need these back by June sixth, so we have to grade them up and make sure it can be out and distributed. Uh, the brush shop, uh, is open this Saturday, May tenth, from eight to noon, um, at the park on South Anderson. And, um, just a friendly reminder for everybody, Mother's Day is on Sunday, just a friendly, friendly reminder, uh, so please, well, mother or, um, think about them on that day. All right, that is my, uh, council report. Anything resonate with any other council members before I move on? Okay? Moving on to staff reports, it's the first council meeting of the month, not anything you'd like to highlight, just as a quick.
No, just as, as always, I wanna thank our staff here in the city. Like many other small cities, we do more with less, meaning we do more with less people, we are less diversified than, like, larger cities are, so everybody does many, many tasks and I'm very thankful for all of our staff and everything they do, everybody works really hard.
Agreed. And again, thank you for the willingness, appreciations.
Thank you.
So, all right, so normally we adjourn, but this time I'm gonna ask for recess for the budget workshop on May twenty se-, second, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Councilmember President Ray, you all still good with that date and time? I wanna make sure we have a form. If not, it'd be really depressing.
I will potentially be absent.
Okay. We have to add at least three. So, two. Okay, I, I mean, barring any complications, we should be good.
Okay.
So I would entertain a motion to recess. Make a motion that we recess for the project workshop, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at six P M. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Kendra, second by Karen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's for it.